Can you speak up?
We can't hear.
City Council Letter to Councilmember Fagan Regarding His Approval To The Health District Board.
I haven't even over the rules. This is just like a council meeting where you can't speak from the audience. Can't do it until we're to an open, public comment period and then go in order. Okay, well, I'm the first to go in order. So any changes to it or do you want to go straight to public comment on the letter?
I'd like to make the motion. I'd like to make a motion to defer approval of the letter. I'd like to step back and recommend that we draft a resolution setting and defining expectations, outlining responsibilities, and defining criteria for removal for council members on all boards and commissions.
So your second. I would speak in favor of the motion because that would put a framework in place for all of our boards because I think that freedom of speech issue has been confused with the fact that council appoints by a majority of councils to boards and commissions. And those are two separate issues completely. We appoint every January people to boards. And certain things have come to light that if they would have, he would not have been appointed to that board. So I would like to speak in favor of the rules that we would develop internally as councils so that we have consistency moving forward and clear communication.
Certain things have come to light.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to have to speak against that. And the reason being is because, you know, considering what's happened over the last couple of days, I'm afraid that the majority is going to pass some rules that are going to be tyrannical. You guys are going to want me, as a board member, for instance, let me illustrate. You guys are going to want me, as a board member, to go lockstep with the mission statement and in the case of the Health District, and I'm going to say no. You know, even in a democracy, we are a melting pot of ideas and opinions. And you know, it's those better ideas and opinions that rise to the surface that become law and policy. And if you squelch those ideas and opinions, you're basically denying people representation. And I can tell you factually that there are people that need to be represented that are concerned about vaccinations like I am. So again, I'm not going to support.
I don't know who loses up first, Wes, it's beside, Councilmember Allen.
I'm going to speak against the motion as well. I think this is best handled at the end of the panel looking to where we look to my council members. I served on the health board for two years. We had a dentist who, it was antifluoride. And we didn't move to make a move to remove him, even though fluoride was considered one of the greatest public safety and our public health interventions of the last century. It was a poison horse.
They did that in Auschwitz.
Stifling that, I do feel is actually a hit on freedom of speech. Each one of us are entitled to have our own opinion. And because of this interesting week, I've never seen anything blow up like this. In my opinion, it should be best handled unless there is some egregious act or a criminal act that's occurred. Having someone have an opinion on a situation should not disbar them from the opportunity to serve on a board.
Councilmember Walther?
So with the motion on the floor is to...
Develop those policies.
Can you restate the motion?
Good. What I'm trying to get at is, being the new person on this council, there doesn't seem to be a document or a resolution or a definition of what our responsibilities are when we get appointed to boards or commissions. And so as I looked at this issue, I thought, how do you know if you're doing right or wrong if you don't have some kind of criteria or framework? Or if you don't know the expectation from the board or the council, how you represent the council? To me, this is about council members, I'm representing the council on boards. And if there is an expectation of behavior or responsibilities on the board that you're appointed to, that would be something that I think should be formalized and righted. So we're aware of it and we can look at the boards and if we, you know, maybe better match ourselves. I don't know, but I just, to me, it's been a little frustrating because there isn't a framework. Sometimes you go on these boards and you don't know what the expectations are.
They want a table now because they...
A resolution or something that we can work together.
Can't hear you.
We're in a consent agenda and we'll all try to speak louder, but you can't speak out of turn if you're in the audience. It's not going to work. Councilmember Walther?
So speaking to the motion, I think that would be a good idea. My only set of framework, expectations, I'll see a problem with that. My only concern is that some of these boards are set by state law with certain expectations. Like the Board of Health is the creation of state RCW, SRTC. As we, we may, it may be challenging because each board has a different statute by which it exists. So I'm just throwing that out for consideration. I think it's a good idea. We just have to consider that each board comes with it the whole set of bylaws and...
I think we can get through that during the evaluation phase. It was Councilwoman Snyder that called.
I agree with the clarity of the process. In order to protect free speech and diversity of opinion for all of us going forward, so everyone knows what the process is, so it's not confusing publicly with the processes. I agree that you have to conform to the specific requirements of each board, but we're only talking about some internal parts of the process. So we know, we're still in the process or in an evolution of the bylaws.
Good news and bad news.
Because people come on, people come off. There's also attendance issues that come up as well, so I'd like to address that. So I think that's why I support the motion.
Councilwoman Snyder?
So I'm very lukewarm on the motion, very wide. Councilmember Fagan herself voted for Councilmember Walther off the Plan Commission so that he could take her spot for no reason whatsoever. No standards were set. No one said, here is why this is happening. So why that is all of a sudden an issue now, I think it's kind of beyond, in part, myself, that you've got the votes to do it, you do it. That's what this council is. We are a majority-led council. I totally reject the notion, as somebody who came home today, we are taking away Mr. Fagan's voice by leaving his side. Anybody who knows Mr. Fagan, me, myself, knows we can't take away his voice. He's got the loudest voice on this council and whatever he says will be reported on media ad nauseam. The fact that we can even do that is somehow still, I think. The truth is, we are looking at whether Mr. Fagan can represent the city council's views. That's another thing that nobody has an absentee right.
Not the people.
I didn't think there was ever a situation that caused me to look at pulling somebody off the board mid-term until this happened. Matter of fact, when Councilmember Fagan called the governor a lying whore while being the vice chair of Aging and Long-Term Care for Eastern Washington, when he knew that our funding depended on being in the governor's budget and agency-revised legislation in order to have the resources to serve seniors and the disabled in our community, I resisted calls for his resignation and to pull him off that board. I ended him, I left him there. I'm tired. I'm frustrated. I want to go back to the work of actually governing this city. This is a distraction. I've hit my limit with it and that's why I think he needs to be pulled off this board. To compare vaccinations to enforced sterilization, to me is insane. It's an insult to folks all around the world who are dying to get vaccinations that would help them live and to people who have actually had to experience enforced sterilization. To conflate these things with unsettled science, to me, is a danger to folks who may be considering whether they get vaccinations or not. Fact is, they shouldn't be listening to me, they shouldn't be listening to you, they should be going to their doctor to consult about vaccination. And it jeopardizes folks in our community who have conditions like leukemia, who depend on people caring about the common public's good for when they go out into the community and experience it with a condition that makes them vulnerable to disease. Having somebody who espouses that view on a public health board puts that at odds. And I disagree with Councilmember Allen. This is not a public health board decision, it's our decision. I agree that there should be dissenting views on the health board. And I think plurality of views is great, but if we have a decision on a council about who we send over there. Councilmember Fagan never told us, his opposition to vaccines, when we appointed him on the board here now. He concealed that information from us, not allowing us to make an informed choice. We are bearing the responsibility for who we send over there. It reflects on us as a council. And I take that very seriously. I feel like there's a reason to push back when we have somebody who is questioning the value of public health and vaccines and...
Councilman Allen, you have another comment?
Well, for the record, I don't agree with Mike's position on this either, but I do think he has the right to have a voice and not have it stifled, even if it is on the public board. He referred to Amber's being taken off, but it was done at our annual change. It wasn't done midstream. You've been taken off boards, I've been taken off boards by the majority, but we always do it at the annual. And I don't think creating some sort of majority litmus test to be putting council members on boards is a solution, it's a don't. I think it should be handled in our normal process, the due process of the council work. I don't think going outside of that, even though we may disagree with his opinion, is the right conduct and protocol of all of us, it's a don't.
Opposed in favor of the motion on the table to defer right policies and consider those so it's consistent across the board? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Passes four to three and with that, the special session is adjourned.
Shouldn't the people be screened?
We signed up for an open forum.
Well, we signed open forums.
We make the rules, not you. We voted you in, buddy.
We'll vote you out.
I love the passion.
Still have to...
Our meeting is over, you're a coward.
No public comment.
No way. Ain't no backing down.
My wife and I are going to be behind you over too.
You bet.
Hey, I'm tired of those people coming into our town that carries kind of diseases coming up like that? No. That's wrong. What happens if I come in and I sneeze on you and you get something diseased on me? I mean, sneezing on you, that's a thing out there. You get any... No, that's wrong. Ben, Ben Fagan's going to be voted out of.
I'm going to try to get a little closer if I measure, thank you so much.
Want to face this issue head on? I think that the statements that the majority of the council members made were very disingenuous. The reason being is because I can sort of have multiple incidents where I was the dissenting voice with regard to tying viral virus V-68 to illegal aliens. Whereas the outrage, there was, we spoke up when Ebola came on the scene. And oh, by the way, wasn't that gentleman from Dallas in illegal alien primary, that guy? Why are these guys going to face this issue head on? Why is it that they are going to deny 7% to 10% of the people who feel, as I do, that are concerned about influenza vaccines? Where are they going to deny those people a voice? Well, of course, I mean, you know exactly what was going on over here. These guys want to formulate, they want to make sure that you're thinking the same way that they are. They want to make sure that you are 100% in agreement with the mission statement. Well, guess what? I don't 100% agree with the city's mission statement. Okay? This is nothing but political theater. Somebody is afraid of their position, losing their position. That's what this is all about. Well, you know, they are majority, they are veto group for this particular point. So guess what? My hands are tied. All I can say is, look, if people out there can recognize this for the tyranny that it is, then they need to start coming down to our city council meetings and voice their hand. So you guys, I tell you something, I didn't read the letter, I don't care to read it because the letter is disingenuous. If these guys were consistent, I'd have a heart attack. They're not. They're in it for themselves, I'm in it for the people. That's it. This is what it's all about, right here, guys. The eighth man are the people, okay? They have the same concerns as I do with regard to vaccines. Now, you're probably not going to hear me say this too often, but in this particular case, I am pro-choice. So anyway...
Are you going to do anything about the resolution?
I don't care about the resolution. You guys already, you guys already heard my position. I'm not going to quit the board, they have to remove me. That's it, bottom line. There was a change of the guard when we first came into office. And when it came to the board assignments, et cetera, yeah, Amber ended up getting, I ended up supporting the vote to put me on the Plan Commission, take her off. She had already spent some time on the Plan Commission. So when Candace' mom come into office, the same thing happened. I got taken off, she went on. You know, this thing with Council President Stucker, you know, it was kind of a midterm thing. I mean, you guys read Brunt's, oh, by the way, Brunt wrote an excellent article. Excellent article. I got to thank him very much, as well as Mr. Doug Clay. Because I'll tell you, those guys really nailed it. You know, in that article, it reeked of tyranny. But if you remember in that article, towards the end, Council President made the statement, something to the effect of, "The county commissioners felt that the representation from the city of Spokane was too liberal." So he approached me and said, "Do you want to serve on the health board?" "Yeah, sure, no problem." Okay? I didn't know that it came with requirements. I am representing the interests of the people, not the interests of the government. These guys are doing just the opposite. These guys have put themselves on a pedestal. I am a servant. Those guys are not. That's all I got to say. You bet. They sure are, they are major. Well, that's what I, that's why I'm saying, this was done on purpose because you guys were supposed to get an opportunity to speak to the public and they took it away from you. Yeah, you bet, I'm telling you. I mean, that book, I had posted on Facebook, just a quick request, send me to my city email anybody that you know of that has been injured by vaccines or died from vaccines. And that booklet that my legislative assistant's got has got that kind of stuff. You have, you just cannot believe the outpouring of support. The outpouring of people that have come forward to tell me the stories about how their children are now autistic, ADHD, ADB. Some of those children have died. I mean, come on, let's get real here.
They didn't even follow protocol.
I agree.
They didn't follow protocol. They did not respect those who came down to talk about this letter today by not even sticking to the protocol of the notice that was sent.
Changed the rules midstream?
Yep. Because the study session was not supposed to begin until after the special administration session. And so we didn't even get started until 4:19, when it was supposed to start at 3:30.
We did our research, ultimately we decided to get our kids immunized, just like Mr. Fagan decided to get his kids immunized. What's disturbing to me is that 15 years later, we are still talking about that project. That's when it comes to this issue, misinformation has a half-life of 100 years. So if, I feel like if we don't engage in a public dialogue, challenging his comparisons of vaccination to forced sterilization, the other things that he said to the media, what we're doing is we are allowing that misinformation to stand. I don't feel like I adequately represent my citizens if I allow that misinformation.
Suppressing free speech.
That's a, I think it's a good way to describe it. Obviously, I'm upset. You said multiple times, you had enough, you said it's a distraction talking about this meeting and where we go from here and what basically is going to have to happen.
First of all, I want to make it clear that I, there are some issues. We've worked together under different issues. I believe you have some great representatives. But I think again and again, there's really a lot of distractions that are a distraction. And this is another, there's really no issue involved here. There's no legislation, they're not consulted. Actions on vaccines. And it comes during a critical time when we have a new measles outbreak in the United States. But we also have clinical diseases, folks with leukemia and sensitive conditions. I feel like somebody has to speak up for those people.
Do you think he should be removed from the health board?
I don't think he can rep... I wrote the letter that we consulted. I really wanted to get some clarification from him about his comments and what he's doing. I think someone, a reasonable person, could listen to his media interviews and construe that vaccines are a bad idea, that they should be... I think that is wrong. I think he shouldn't be consulting me or Mr. Fagan on that, he should consult your doctor. I was hoping we'd get an opportunity to hear more about what he thinks on us. If he's against vaccinations as a public health tool, I don't think he's a good person to be on our health district to represent our council.
He said that he thought that there should be dissenting views on boards. So you get to see both sides of the issue.
Oh, yeah, believe me, have you been to a health district? We've got some dissenting views on that board. We've got dissenting views on this council. To me, it's more a matter of, do you support the mission statement of the organization? If you don't, maybe that's not the best board.
Is it, it seems like the debate is between a freedom of speech and how the city council is represented?
No. Like somebody said to me, "You're taking away Mike Fagan's voice." Well, nobody can take away Mike Fagan's voice. He is, he is one of the most articulate out there expressing his opinion. And people generally love to cover his opinion. So there's no way to take away his voice. He's entitled to it utterly and absolutely. He is not entitled to utter an absolute support by this council for all of his opinions.
Now, this letter that you wrote, this letter that you wrote, you said it, a couple statements from him. What were your thoughts when you heard those statements for the first time?
I, I, how am I going to explain this to constituents that have young kids, that are working on their immunizations? How am I going to explain this to kids that, in families, that have leukemia or other sensitive diseases that are depending on folks putting forward public health as a priority in order for them to live a normal life? I don't know how I could explain it to them.
Is this a public safety issue?
I, I, it's a public health issue. It's really a public health issue. Public health means that we sometimes have to give inconvenience ourselves as individuals in order for the greater good. It's public action for the public good. It's the reason we've gone from a society where these kind of diseases used to routinely kill and disable folks to a society where we have longer life spans and folks have hope that they didn't have 100 years ago.
Now, this letter was tabled. It's going to be at least another week until this is brought up again.
It's tabled, meaning it won't, it has to, tabled means that it's indefinitely, as Nancy knows, it's kind of indefinitely in limbo. It can't, it has to be reintroduced by a majority voter of the council, so it's pretty much...
It's an election year, nobody's going to bring it up.
Yeah, it's pretty much done at this point.
Is this kind of it or what is going to happen next? If anything, and what, and what do you think is going to happen next?
Um, the majority of the council voted to look into creating some guidelines and some standards about how we can handle these conditions. So that would be the next step.
Will Mike, you will here in a second. Do you think Mike Fagan will continue serving on the health board? Do you think he will continue serving on the city council?
Oh, I'm sure he'll continue serving on the city council. I don't hear anybody questioning that. I, at this point, he probably is still in the health system. Once again, I'm disappointed that we didn't get some more clarification of these views, but...
John, I have a question about even the letter on...
Go right at it right now, we're all high.
I don't understand how you can say that while you have the absolute right to your opinion and your freedom of speech, you do not have an absolute right to represent the council and sitting with your personal views on an appointed board? I find that hypocritical because...
That's fine.
My ears on the council that, you know, I know your views, your personal views and beliefs.
I got, I got pulled off of boards for my personal...
That's right, and ditto to me. So we all know our personal beliefs and we bring those to the board. So to say that we don't have an absolute right... No, I think that...
That because I got pulled off, we both got pulled off of boards because of our positions and our beliefs, this is no different.
But when we're on there, the thing is, you say that Mike isn't supporting the mission of the health board. My kids are vaccinated. I chose to vaccinate my children. But there is a huge report that just came out this week that says that almost 10% of people are still very, very concerned. And out of those 10%, let me talk to me, 9% of them were Democrats, 5% of the percent are Republicans.
I don't doubt that.
And people are very concerned. So to me is, by Mike having a dissenting voice on the health board, to me, challenges...
Does that study make you think that, rethink whether or not you should have vaccinated your kids?
In this day and age, yeah, it does. But not just that, but I have not got there.
Do you think Mike Fagan is urging people to not vaccinate their kids?
I don't know he is.
See, I don't know either.
I don't know, but you know what?
So that's why, that's why I wrote this letter, so we could get some clarity.
But he wants to, he can't because, what do you say to the... You're talking about the boy with leukemia, I'm talking about the kids. I'll tell you that their kids were vaccinated and they happened to hit the lottery on it.
And I would say that they shouldn't listen to you, me, or Mr. Fagan. They should go to their doctor about that. That's the best way to get advice. And I would also say, I would also, I would also say this to you. One of the reasons I wrote that letter is to get clarity on Mr. Fagan's opinion. I don't have that.
The difference is a doctor has to give a patient's permission when he's going to experiment on it. And, and they're potentially dangerous, they should have informed consent, right? The doctors in real talk, how come you don't want to give them consent?
I never said that nobody should have informed consent. You tell me, if you know some doctor who's giving vaccinations without consent, who will pursue that?
You don't hear the other side, so they're not getting informed consent.
I'm listening to you right now. I'm listening to you right now.
Yeah, but who goes about it except you and I? You're saying they're pushing fluoridation or whatever.
Oh, fluoridation, I'm sorry, fluoridation was not at issue today.
Freedom of choice for parents, that should be.
And matter of fact, that wasn't at issue today either. I'm not, I'm not challenging any, I don't think Mr. Fagan or myself are challenging any current regulation that's out there for schools or whatnot.
And so, you're pushing vaccination, and people that don't want it are good, they're trying to vote on it and to force it on people right now.
Let me put it this way, I am here unequivocally to support the value of vaccination. I think vaccinations have been...
And there's, nobody's been ever harmed by vaccination?
I'm not saying that.
Well, just greater good for the greater number, then.
I'm saying the benefits to our society from vaccinations outweigh the negatives.
Okay, yeah, greater good for the greater number of people. Other people are hurt by it, tough shit.
Well, I, I, I don't think that's the case. I think that, I, I regret, I don't, I don't think anybody, if, if someone has been hurt, that is, that's, that's something we need to look into, but that's like a separate issue.
We're about to swing through this pascal.
You know, my, my dad is from a generation who watched his friends and family on his side.
I am that generation, and I watched that. I saw children in iron lungs.
You dropped it.
Thank you very much. I dropped children, saw children in iron lungs.
I don't know why we want to go back to that.
In the 50s, when I was nine and 10 years old, that was polio. Dr. Salt discovered a cure for that.
You realize a flying flu was a mistake?
You don't want to vaccinate kids because you don't like...
Going forward, insisted...
Side effects of other drugs are what you're arguing, I'm for your position. One thought, there are all kinds of side effects and all kinds of medications that our society takes. The list is endless. Sometimes what you can, the effects from the drug that you're taking can be worse than you're trying...
It's true.
And you need to use that certain in your argument, okay?
This is the sad thing, that's probably something that me and Mr. Fagan totally agree on. I think there's a lot of concerns there. But, to indict, because of that concern, to just throw the baby out with the passwater and say, we should never even have any vaccines?
One more thing for your argument, go back to early man, the brass age, the bronze age, and those, and the beliefs and the juju's that they believed then, we laugh at those things. We absolutely laugh and get down on the carpet and roll around in guffaw, because of some of the things that they believed then that we know now are absolutely absurdities. Your position, sir, is the same as that. It is absurd, you keep fighting, buddy, I'm for you.
I'm sorry, but I have to go.
You call him Snyderman?
Yes.
Good to meet you, Jim Carrey.
I appreciate you being here, Roy, I appreciate you talking to me, appreciate you, sir.